You won.
Most of you approve.
Second, it's been moved in second act for approval. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Item D2, deliberating the repair or replacement of the public works facility currently located at 6300 West McGeeo Avenue. Dave Webkin, our Director of Public Works.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. The purpose of this PowerPoint slide is to review some of the background, where we were back in 2017, and where we progressed through various consulting services, and how they outline certain repair issues, needs, and also documenting various efficiencies or deficiencies throughout the facility. This PowerPoint is approximately 45 slides. I will not be going through each and every slide, but my purpose is staff working with communications, IT, Andy Hetzer as well, trying to make excerpts of these videos to kind of show you some of the inefficiencies that we have at the yard, so. The municipal yard was, you can see there, it's at about seven and a half acre parcel. It's been there since 1940-ish. There's various buildings there that you can see that the main garage, item number one, is used for mostly the heated garage area for parking of vehicles, city vehicles, and all operations and administrative staff. Number two is the north garage area. That's just used for cold storage. There's an alley separating the main garage as well as that annex there. So there are operations performed there such as welding, fabricating, but mostly it is cold storage for materials that we use. Item number three is the salt dome, about 8,000 square feet for about 5,000 tons that we store per year. Item number four is our drop-off shed that we have. It's about 200 square feet, but again, take notice that we have patrons that are using that area within the garage facility or public works yard area. Item number five is called the Yonka Building. I believe it was purchased by the city, or it was constructed in the early 1930s, and it's right now primarily used for cold storage for our various divisions' inventory as well as our street division. Other areas of, that we use for satellite locations for storage or processing of our materials is the Morgan drop-off site on 116th Morgan. There's about 15 acres that we have there. They provide a variety of processing of yard waste, brush. We do haul spoils there anytime we have a main break. These spoils are stored there. The windstorm, all the logs are stored there as well in area number D. But the main focus is here that we had to construct a storage shed, and that's box C in the yellow there, to add more storage. So we have inventory items being stored in that location. Thus, going between the main municipal yard and to this location, the pickup materials are inventory items. And you can see there's various other uses for the area for equipment storage, snow. We have the reservoir and transfer station. The reservoir that's located near 96th and Mitchell, that helps pump the water to the west side of the city. There, the primary concern, or notation I want you to take, is there's a storage shed right adjacent to that. Most, if not all, of the water divisions' equipment hydrants are stored there in that area. Again, that's off-site. It's a satellite inventory location. The transfer station near 50th and Rogers, that's just that. It's where we collect refuse day-to-day basis. We have five crews and we dump that refuse. Is at this location, and our contractor then transfer and hauls it to a site where it can be dumped in landfill. There's a lot of responsibilities that we have with the Department of Public Works, with our water division, forestry, electrical, fleet, sanitation, and street, and so on. So, back in December 2017, the common council at that time directed staff to review the replacement of the city yards facility. There, they indicated that they wanted us to identify current repair or replacement of a facility. What are the requirements of a new facility that can meet our needs? What are other comparable facilities that have gone through construction and have been completed? What other options for replacement that we can consider in the future? Approximate cost estimates for their projects, as well as a projected timeline for completion. McKinstry Consulting was hired back in 2018, and they were asked to project a repair, replacement capital expense for a 30-year timeline. And there, it indicates the amounts for each facility. City Hall and municipal yard were rated at about $12 million for replacement costs. McKinstry also outlined and identified deficiencies through the operations of the municipal yard, given the travel time could be processes going from one location to the next, moving parked vehicles in order to get to a certain location, repair bays, again, switching vehicles, going to the various inventory satellite areas throughout the city, and they came out with our approximate potential savings of $600,000 per year. And some of those efficiencies are listed there. This is an overhead picture of the McGeeo site, and please note the amount of parked vehicles that are stored outside the municipal yard main facility. So the main facility has about 110 parking stalls, and within this area, we do keep heated material that is required to be heated, so it does take up some parking spots. But we do have quite a few refuse and recycling vehicles that are sitting out in elements. There are approximately 280,000 to 300,000 for each, so you're looking at roughly over $3 million. Then we have various plow blades that are obviously used in the wintertime that are stored out in elements. We have vehicles here that are spares for our provisional seasonal staff, and then we have forestry vehicles as well. There is the flow concerns, which we'll get into a little bit later, where entry for the city employees as well is mixed with the public for the drop-off, as well as exiting the vehicle as well. You have very narrow pathways to go to and from and around different locations and areas, as well as this alley here is usually one-way and usually one vehicle due to how narrow it is. So, Bariantos Engineering was contracted back in June the 19th, and they too evaluated the city's municipal yard facility as well as our processes. And they came out with nine recommendations of areas that we should be looking at to improve the existing facility. And if I may, I'll just play this video, compliments to our communications department.
In 2018, McKinstry Consulting and the Bariantos Design Consulting reviewed the operations to identify any deficiencies at the existing garage. Results of that review showed that the existing facility has many operational deficiencies. These deficiencies limit the effect of traffic flow, cleanliness of jobs, the security and safety of the staff, and the ongoing daily tasks performed within the main garage area. The following major categories of deficiencies were identified. A, lack of adequate space to house assigned equipment stuck in workstation. B, clear circulation paths for equipment and workflow. C, adequate access to equipment and stuff indoors. D, patrol and security inventory stuff. E, environmental health of the interior due to lack of adequate airflow. D, theft and personal attacks within facility. E, separation of public and vendor interaction with staff. H, supervisional lines of sight and communication ability. I, supportive group facilities and gender balance.
So, the yard functions, what they came up as recommendations, some of the deficiencies are listed there. They indicated in the middle of the municipal yard is where we have our fueling islands. We only have two of those, given the fleet that we provide service to, as well as with other city departments and other agencies. So, by having that fuel island at that location, that causes a lot of traffic flow issues, especially in the morning and at the end of the shift. We do have various vendor trucks or deliveries that are being made, and the traffic flow is congested and caused by these deliveries that are on the other side of the facility. From time to time, we do have private vehicles from the public that are entering into the municipal yard area for assistance, or they're just not aware, you know, where the drop-off area and appropriate service area. And the concern of security around the fenced-in area. We did have some thefts there recently, but they increased security with the fencing around, but also around the area of the employee parking lot. Here's just a sample of semi that's attempting to deliver some refuse carts down at the Yonka area, which is in the south side of our property or parcel, and they have to kind of work their way around in very tight turns. These are some examples of just somewhat confusion for the public, but also delivery personnel that you are mixing the city employee services along with the patrons and the public exiting out the gate closest to the Beloit Road. You have various blind spots when individuals are walking on the sidewalk, as well as when you're exiting near the Burnham Street exit. Here are some examples too, just very quick videos. I think the video shows it best rather than explaining. So this is the main area by the fuel islands. So the point being, if you have a single-axle tandem or a large vehicle, we only have certain flow directions, and if they want to exit the yard, they'll have to turn around in this area. Again, vehicles fueling up. And again, as I mentioned, other departments use the fuel islands for service and for their fuel. So fleet vehicle parking, like the reports have indicated, we just don't have enough parking stalls, whether it be heated or cold storage, just so we have equipment under a roof from the elements so they can last longer. In the wintertime, we do have various vehicles parked outside, usually refuse packers, small light trucks. Those are applicable. We do have them plugged into a heat block so we can readily use them and start them up. However, it does take time to remove the snow and get them operational. Snow plowing, for some of you that did look at our facility during a snow operation, it would be nice to have a quicker service where we can distribute and have these vehicles go out on the street, but we don't have the room to have the plow blades attached to these vehicles. So various employees with numerous trucks will have to locate their plows for each vehicle that they use. From time to time, we do use the aisleway within the garage area, and we pack those driving lanes or those areas within the garage area so the next morning or during the snow operation, we have all the vehicles up and running and they're warmed up, so. Tailgating, this operation is whenever you have a tandem or single dump truck, we have a attachment that we want to put on a tailgate for the dump truck. This is occurring on the inside of our facility. It's at a special location, and I'll show a quick video indicating that it does cause traffic to slow down or congested, but as well, we have support beams within the structure of the garage where at times, when you're raising the truck body or the dump truck, it'll damage that support beam. And lastly is having adequate wash bay for our vehicles. We have a manual wash bay, and it does not provide underbody cleaning capability. The big concern is the turning radius from entering into this wash bay, from our alley area into the wash bay itself, and then exiting inside the garage area. So the longer the vehicle, the more concerns and the capability is going to be restricted based on the turning restrictions. So here is just an overview of where all the vehicles are stored, and usually these are out for the full year. They're seasonal. Equipment or various trucks that we use for each division, but you can see that, again, for the value of the assets, they are being stored outside in elements. Here's some examples of vehicles, plow blades, containers, that over the years being stored outside, and you can see what the elements have done to those type of vehicles or equipment.
But they have the new city logo on them, which is nice. Really, seriously, I'm glad that it is new, the new one.
This is an interesting video, a very quick video. So inside the garage area, we provide fleet maintenance and then lubrication area for preventive maintenance. When you go down the aisle within the municipal yard garage, you have to make a 90-degree turn and get into this lube rack. So props to the operators because I would have gray hair. So this is our technician, Mike. And if you could, here's usually vehicles that are stored. At certain times, you may have individuals that are from electrical that store their vehicles. If someone is not using that vehicle, Mike would have to go and find the keys, go in electrical, "Can I move truck 45 or using it?" And he'll probably have to move one, two, or three vehicles or four in order to make that swing into that preventative maintenance lube area. So now, we are switching off to, it was recommended to improve our wash rack or capability of prolonging the life of the equipment or fleet. This is, if you can picture, in our alley. It's one-way, and to enter into our wash rack, again, it's a 90-degree turn to go and enter. There was recommendations, hey, can we do other departments' vehicles? It'd be nice, but given the length of those vehicles, I don't think they would be able to make the turn inside to enter and exit, and these vehicles will briefly show that. So individual made the turn, but he's got a, had a little space to it. Now he's got to watch the aisle that's so narrow. Mr. Hinsman, very good operator as well. And if I may, so if Mr. Hinsman made this turn, and then he was exiting the wash rack into our garage to exit, and if you... Noticed open spaces there? If not, then he would have to move those parked vehicles or have someone move them. Oops, sorry, apologize. Here is where I kind of referenced that tailgate section. So when you have a spreader that's in a dump body, you want to remove the spreader, and then you want to put a tailgate on there because you want to haul spoils. So in this section, this is inside the garage, when vehicles want to exit the garage, they're going to have to go down this aisle, okay? And there's a designated area, as I mentioned before, that they have to position themselves to hook up the gate or attach the gate to. So vehicles are going around this parked tandem. If there's vehicles that are parked here, that would preclude them from doing such. Now, if you notice, here's that beam that has been hit maybe one or two times. Knocked down one. But then here's the tailgates that they have with the overhead crane. Now, there are vehicles that are, what, trying to exit and will exit, but at times they're delayed just due to the workflow. So fleet services inefficiencies, what they mentioned there is just repair bays. We need larger repair bays, you know, they're too narrow. When you have repair bays, let's say you're waiting for a park, it could be one day, two days, three days, and if you're taking a transmission out, you cannot move that vehicle, so you're kind of stuck with that bay being full. And given where it logistically, you know, where it's positioned, it doesn't help you so you can move additional vehicles in there to be serviced. So that's the gist of the recommendations on this slide, where they're trying to access other repair bays, try to provide more bays for the mechanics so they don't have just one bay that they can work on one vehicle and then have a vehicle drive in and exit freely. Here's some areas here of the fleet services within the municipal yard. This is the main garage service area where we have eight bays. We have two garage doors, so we have to do some turning in order to get into the four bays on each side. Here is at a different location within the municipal yard, so it's not in close proximity of the fleet division. This is a small engine repair shop. This is for any lawnmowers, riders, any type of small-engine snowblowers. Here's the tire repair shop. This is where we have more inventory of tires that you can see here. This is across the other side of the municipal yard garage. So Mike that you seen that was in the lube rack would have to go potentially maybe to the small engine shop, walk to the tire shop, get his tires, or position the vehicle at that location. At times, the repair bays are full. You can see there's approximately six vehicles that are being stored here, and the mechanics now are servicing a vehicle here in the alley because the bays are full. And this will happen most likely in the spring, summertime, fall. It does happen from time to time in the wintertime. Also, due to cold weather, we may have these vehicles come into the garage area and position themselves, but it still restricts the traffic flow within the facility. Inventory, what we're looking at is we have four different locations of various inventory throughout the public works facility or facilities, given our satellite locations. It's recommended that we try to get all our inventory into one area to provide security, more accountability of materials. I mean, if an employee is taking something out, sometimes they forget. Sometimes they forget to report certain items, so we like to have more accountability for those items. Here is, in that alley area, again, next to fleet services, this is where we receive shipments within the municipal yard. So if there's a semi truck or any type of service delivery, this is where they come to. It's recommended that we have a designated area that has some type of docking, potentially to load and store that material next to the inventory division where it can be secured. This is where the individuals from other services that are dropping off deliveries come to to report that they're there. Here's inside inventory division. Notice that there's maximum height of about 12 feet in narrow aisles. This is our fluid storage for hydraulic, antifreeze, so on and so forth, and this is within this area as well. And it's recommended to have containment for spills, that sort of thing. So that was an issue that they reported or identified. Building and sign, they provide a lot of services. We used to have a spray booth, but that spray booth now, because when the facility was constructed back in mid-1940s, the vehicles were smaller at that time. Now, you know, they're wider, they're bigger, they're taller, so the spray booth is just not, we just don't use it because we can't get vehicles inside of that. So what we have is, we have a small spray booth inside our building and sign shop that can, you know, do temporary painting for signs, but also small fleet equipment parts. This is our sign installation area, so if we have any type of regulatory signs or other signs requests, this is where they make that. They kind of mentioned that the concern here was ventilation, adequate ventilation for the employees. Electrical, the big thing here is inventory. A lot of our inventory is stored at Morgan drop-off site, so any knockdowns or reused or pre-used equipment, we have to go from point A, whatever the accident site is, and go to the Morgan drop-off site, pick it up, collect it, and then go to the municipal yard, and we may have to rewire it. When we rewire it, it does take up room, and sometimes it is in the parking areas within the garage, municipal yard garage. Wire materials that we use, again, trying to have that storage centralized into an inventory area. And this is our area here. This is where they have work benches. This is where they report, where they may have break or lunch, and this is a small area that they put their streetlight poles on to do the rewiring. Street and sewer, they have the most vehicles within the department. For example, the snow plows that you've seen there that were rusted or in the elements are approximately $12,000 to $14,000 each. So we like to get those inside undercover in cold storage. So we like to get those inside undercover in cold storage. Refuge trucks are parked on the opposite side of the garage. So when they are inside, crews have to walk and, again, they're trying to back the vehicle out. That there's other vehicles that prohibit or it's restrictive. We do not, this is the only division that does not have a work area. The work area is basically either outside or in our wash rack. So when they're cutting pre-casts, manhole, sanitary manholes, what they do is transport that from the Yonka area and put it into their wash rack. Then that way, the dust and everything can be addressed there, I guess. Here's the wash bay. Again, this is vehicles for a snowplow operation. We took this. We like to cram all the vehicles in certain areas within the garage that we can store. So that's a good example of that. Here is a vehicle that is trying to get out for the morning refuse collection. So given this video, you are limited on what you can store on the opposite side of these large lengthy vehicles. Forestry, we have vehicles stored inside and outside. A lot of their materials, trees, things, trees that they order, is stored right there on the ground at Big U Avenue. Restrictes the storage of vehicles, but also the traffic flow as well. We had a semi that went in towards the north side of the facility and they had to unload trees. So they had to take a fork truck, a lot of crew members, and it was just kind of a delay for that period of time. And these are indicating identification of materials that are stored in their area. This is asphalt and cold patch, so that has to be undercover. So inside the municipal yard, we have parking spaces that are taken up due to this type of material that has, you know, can't be stored outside. This is just a small engine area where we have lawnmowers and chainsaws stored in this area. That's right next to their break or lunch area. Water, they too have a lot of items that they store off-site. We mentioned that at the reservoir pumping station area with that storage shed. They do have an entry point where a lot of customers and potential public concerns are addressed at their division. Mistakenly, they think that's the main office area. So that area is not ADA compliant or is it restrictive for the public? So once they get in, I'm not saying, you know, they can go into the facility as a whole. This just shows within that reservoir storage shed, we do have multiple vehicles being stored there. These are various hydrant components. And then this is within the municipal yard divisional storage area of the water division. So support areas, and this is consistent throughout the whole department, is there's actually not enough lockers for the employees. They're not wide enough to accommodate the city clothing, rain gear, boots, also personal clothing that would separate that within the locker. So they're very narrow. There's no private changing areas. If they want to change some type of item, clothing, they'll have to go to a restroom. Office areas are routinely, if you work in there, it's contaminated with soot, dust. There is no emergency shower. So if you're working with any type of chemical or caustic items, the facility should have immediate emergency shower that they can drench themselves to remove that type of material on their body. Provisions for women bathrooms are very, very limited within the current facility. Assembly areas between supervisors and staffs, so sanitation street, they have a hallway where all the lockers are. That's where they go out and they discuss future work items within that day or prior to that shift. Break areas, all break areas within each divisions are within that work area. So whatever you're doing, you still have your lunchbox within that area. Training sessions to accommodate the entire division, we can't do that. Usually it's at the very most twenty people at a time in our conference area. Security has always been an issue for the facility as a whole, trying to limit the public access to the main office area and then having individuals meet that contractor or that vendor. So we're trying to restrict access. Here's sanitation and street. Here's their hallway where they meet and they give out orders. These are the lockers that were provided back in the mid nineteen forties. This is, you know, kind of like the condition of these. Here, this is in our lunchroom in sanitation street. We are provided with the best technology, thanks to you folks, IT. iPads are being used more and more, and this is where they store them. But again, it's one area, outlets is needed, you know, more room. Here's the restroom near sanitation street. This is vintage nineteen, eh, mid nineteen forties. But again, you can kind of notice the poor condition of these facilities. Administration, we're just looking for a lobby that's secured and that's somewhat restrictive. Any individual can enter and once they enter, they can go throughout the garage. If you look at the municipal yard, if you've been there, the garage doors are up. Anybody can, you know, I mean it, it's, the access is fairly easy to enter. So we like to have a designated area that we can meet those patrons or customers. Here's the main area for parking. It's not really identified. We do have a sign here of all customers, vendors to report to the main office, but the parking area is limited and the space is limited. So if you were to drive in there, I think all of us are kind of like, can I park here? Or can I? Sometimes you'll park up by the salt dome. In the meantime, we're still, what, crossing traffic with the city department vehicles. Here, it's a very nice computer lab. The only concern here is we love to have more so we can have, instead of fifteen employees, we could have more employees being trained at once. Strategic goals, how does this improve and relate to our strategic goals? You want to be the preferred municipality in the area. You want to improve the quality of life aesthetically pleasing. You want to take pride in ownership of a facility, ensure fiscal vitality and excellence in government, improving on those deficiencies and making them efficiencies. Resources and feedback, John Matty, our communications department director. He indicated that he will launch various web pages that identifying various videos of our operations, including a frequently asked question document that will be attached, various facility reports that are, that were performed by Bari Entos Consulting or Engineering and McKinstry Consulting, as well as a public input feedback form that is accessible for the public and they can return that to the city. As a reminder, this Saturday, we're having our first open house event for the facility from ten AM to two PM. The drop-off site will be closed. However, we're hoping that a lot of patrons with their children will be interested to see some trucks, see the inside of the garage area. And I know there's a lot of employees there that are, you know, they want to talk about what they do and if they have questions, they want to meet, you know, potentially a plow truck driver and ask questions, this is the time to do so, so. Other than that, Kale?
Sure. Reason I'm here and why I'm talking is you heard from Dave, identify the deficiencies in the current facility, the issue with having split sites around the city and constantly going back and forth. So my role here is to show you that there is an opportunity to address those deficiencies. And I would argue it's going to meet those same strategic goals that you just saw a second ago. So the, the big thing I'm going to tell you tonight is that there, the suggestions made by McKinstry as well as Bari Entos focused on this particular site and what the city could do about it. Correcting those deficiencies based on what Bari Entos has told us cannot be done on the current facility. So that parcel of seven point six acres with a remote parking for, for employees across the street is not sufficient size to get all this done. So initially McKinstry's suggestions for efficiencies resulted in that six hundred thousand dollars annual savings. But they were assuming was that you could take the existing site and rebuild and put everything that's spread out around the city onto one site. And that's where you get the six hundred thousand dollars in savings. Based on the Bari Entos study, we know that cannot be done. It has to be at a larger site. And so that six hundred thousand dollars of savings, I think you can assume is the bare minimum savings by just simply building a new facility on a properly sized site. If you do move to a new site, I did my own rough calculations on it, which by no means this is a lawyer doing math, so bear with me. But basically, what I calculated is that the McKinstry computation of six hundred thousand is approximately a seven percent increase in efficiency. What I've got here, just based on what Bari Entos presented, is about a seventeen percent increase in efficiency if you go to a new site that is approximately twenty acres and laid out appropriately because the computation for seven percent assumes that the current site is going to have some sort of traffic lanes and have proper cold storage. Unless you're building up, that's not going to happen. And building up is, of course, very expensive and it might not be possible to do that in this case because you're going to have dump trucks on the second floor. And I don't know how that works in a building that needs a sixteen-foot ceiling. So we really need to find a parcel that's of sufficient size. I feel like I clicked the right link. But what I'm going to show you is a proposal that would essentially take care of this. Why I can't find it here? I usually have it linked. This one right here, this is my ticket. All right. So on the eastern side of the city, near the area of Fifty-third and Rogers, there are currently two parcels that I think would be very helpful for what we're trying to do here. If you look at this location, there's a single parcel here. This is the transfer station you saw in the, in the presentation before. And this is another facility over here. These are, this is owned by the county currently and under contract with a developer, but it's otherwise a vacant parcel, just open grass right now, former Taladine site. This is a property owned by a property developer named Coakley. It's, again, another larger site. If you combine these two parcels with the transfer station and you vacate Rogers Street from here over, the Bari Entos folks have said that that is a proper layout and sized parcel for what the city is trying to do to maximize efficiency over the current facility. It involves two property owners essentially because the city already owns this parcel. And so what I think the best thing the city could do, and this is my advice to the council, although we're at a discussion point right now, the advice would be to try to voluntarily see if we could acquire these two parcels and then get going on designing a new facility for those parcels. The six hundred thousand dollar McKinstry estimate compared to my estimate, they have six hundred thousand dollars a year. I actually computed at about one point three million dollars a year in operational efficiency. So that's a seven to seventeen percent window. A new building is designed right now to last about eighty years of useful life with proper maintenance, I'm sure it could go longer, but that's the useful life computation that most people are using. And if you stretch those annual savings out over eighty years, you have McKinstry's estimate, again, the bare minimum, at a little over forty-six million dollars of today's value money. It actually would be a lot more money over time through inflation, but in today's dollars, forty-six million compared to my estimate, which is actually a hundred and eight million dollars in savings of operational cost, or at least the value you get. The way I'm computing that value is we have a hundred and nine full-time equivalent employees in DPW right now outside of water. Those hundred and nine employee positions could do the work of a hundred and twenty-five employees as long as the efficiencies are captured. Even McKinstry would add on ten positions as opposed to the eighteen I added on. So no matter what, you're going to get more efficiency at this location. And when you really look at over eighty years, that's where the value comes in. A new building would be expensive. Right now, the latest estimates are very rough because the actual design is going to be very dependent on what the cost is. But the rough estimates are between about forty to fifty million dollars for acquisition of land, architecture, engineering, and construction and everything like that. That would be an upfront cost the city would bond for. So it wouldn't be up that much money right now. It would be bonded over, I think, twenty years is what we're looking at, if I'm not mistaken. So over a twenty-year bonding period, but the current value, that fifty million, if it's the high end, still is completely dwarfed by the concept of saving a hundred and eight million dollars. There's also that twelve million dollars in capital costs and repair that you saw earlier. Building a new facility avoids that twelve million dollars in future costs. In fact, you have something on the agenda later tonight in the council meeting for sixty-five thousand dollars for a roof. So that's the beginning. So this is a possible solution that I think would be a financially smart, long-term investment. In the short term, it's not easy. We're coming out of a pandemic and we're essentially asking folks to spend a little more money to buy a facility for the city right now. It's not easy to do and no one wants to do that. But most financial decisions are not easy. And this is one where if you want the long-term viability of the city to do well, you've got great public works employees who are managing what they can with the facility they have, and they're doing a nice job. You saw those videos, some impressive work. But the longer we ask employees to do that, the more that inefficiency is going to keep piling on top of the city and costing the taxpayers more money. More likely, we're going to have damaged trucks, damaged facilities from accidents. The more likely is that employees are going to be frustrated having to constantly deal with this and it will wear them down as well. You want your employees to feel confident in the equipment and the facilities they use because it makes them more productive. It helps recruiting, it helps retention, there's all kinds of great reasons. So the downside here is the cost, the upfront cost. And I think that's the only downside, frankly. There are a lot of upsides, not only in the near future, but as time goes on, if you build a new facility, there are some really strong upsides financially for the city because of the efficiencies that you gain. And so I guess that is the, the limit of what I've got to say on it right now for the discussion purposes. Happy to talk about any questions or answer any questions you might have or talk about anything you want. But I just can't understate the, I can't overstate the importance of adding what seems like fractional or incremental advantages each year over eighty years. That adds up to be a big number. So I really hope that the council will consider this as an option because it's going to be a good way for DPW to move forward into the next century.
Are there any comments or questions on either one of the presentations?
I have a comment. I would just like to say, seeing this presentation, by the way, thank you. It was well thought out. It's kind of shocking that you've been on life support as long as you have with this facility and that's the only way I can kind of describe that. And once our constituents see that, I couldn't, I don't doubt that they would say, hey, we need to do something about this, these inefficiencies, just the amount of time you have to take to get these vehicles out. We toured the facility, Dana and I did, and, and I was shocked. You know, I'm impressed with the work that you do with your department, the minimal complaints that we get, you know, with snow removal and whatnot. You've done an outstanding job, but I would definitely say that I see the support for this to happen.
And we have great staff, so. Any other comments or questions? Paulman Vitale?
Kale, where are we at with the questions of acquiring the Burnham site? You know, I understand there was somebody else interested before for the county. So where are we at with this? I mean, is something really, is some concrete proposal that we'd be able to acquire that site or still is not sure? I mean, the way things stand right now?
Sure. So prior to tonight, the city did have an individual who's assisting the city in testing the market for various parcels and exploring options. These are two properties that have been approached by that person, by our agent. And so we would just try to continue those And so we would just try to continue those discussions and seeing if there's a way that the city could just simply voluntarily come to a purchase agreement with the two owners. That's one of the advantages of this site is if there's only two owners involved as opposed to other ones we looked at where there were maybe four or more people involved. It's difficult to put together an assemblage. But we think now that it's narrowed down to this site as being the ideal location, given everything else in the city and, and the options that were out there, that we would be able to come to a voluntary agreement with them where they would be willing to sell it for a fair reasonable price.
Yeah, the, I, my really concern with the present, what I call present owner, you know, which is not fully really, doesn't have the full rights at this time. I, I feel kind of, you know, this developer, I mean, he will try to scam by any dollars more than what really perhaps we will pay, you know, because that's what he wants. To me, that's his strategy, you know, that's, that's my biggest problem that I have. Like I said, to me, I mean, I'm fully support to, to get that site. But just the idea, you want to have this man here that he will be benefited in a great fashion that will really hurt some of the money which is going to come out from the taxpayers, you know. That's one of my biggest concerns really. That's why I believe we should be very cautious about that, you know, really. Because this man, he wants the most, I know that's what he wants.
So the, the county currently owns the Teledyne site, is under agreement to sell it to actually the person who owns the property just east of that site on Burnham Street. So the developer there, Jeff Hall is his name, is under contract to buy the Teledyne site. And the owner to the southern property is Mr. Coakley. Both these, these individuals are very experienced and seasoned real estate developers, which is both a positive and a negative. It's a positive in that they're reasonable people and they understand the value of, you know, selling a property like this to the city and being a good neighbor. They understand the value of working with the city to have the long-term benefits for the city. Their taxpayers and the city themselves, so they're, they're going to be interested in this. The downside is the city won't get a deal from them. We're not going to be able to, we're not going to be able to convince them to, you know, that there's something wrong with their parcel and they have to sell it to us for a cheap price. So that's the downside. But what it does mean is that I do believe that they will both be fair with the city. They'll try to maximize their outcomes, no doubt. But we'll have a buyer's agent that will maximize the city's outcome. And usually when those two things happen, you can come to a reasonable price. And no matter what happens, the council would be presented ultimately with the exact numbers that those two properties would be acquired for, and the council would make the decision at that time whether to move forward. No matter what happens, that's always going to be the council's last, their last call on that.
You know, the, the fact it is that the county, I mean, before this developer came forward, but the county really, they were kind of, you know, called stingers, you know? That's what I, in all fairness.
Alman Stefanski?
Just out of curiosity, when will we be able to have some numbers to calculate what's going to cost the taxpayers?
So there'd be two, two phases to this. One would be the acquisition cost. And then second would be the construction and engineering and architecture cost. The idea is we'll probably know the acquisition cost for the land first. And then if the council is interested in doing so, we would approve that with the contingency or some sort of, it would be a contingency to the agreement that would say subject to final approval for the council from an architectural plan, which would then lay out the full budget.
So it wouldn't be this year technically correct, this next budget year? The reason I'm asking is because hearing the school board is coming up with this ridiculous $229, $29 million referendum that they're going to put forward, it's going to be a concern.
I don't know exactly when the financing would kick in. I don't know if, Jason, if you have an idea? The idea would be, best case scenario, we could get this under contract this year yet. Which would then allow us to explore the architecture, architectural drawings and engineering and then get a estimate as to what the actual price of the construction would be. I don't know if we're going to have time to actually bid it out, but we'd at least go into it with a good estimate from a consultant at that point in time. So I don't know if that's the case and we start, if this is approved early next year, what would the financing look like?
We'd probably do a couple financings, just because there's a time limit to how early you can borrow tax exempt funds. So we can, we can turn around borrowing relatively quickly, probably within 90 days. But once we know the acquisition cost, then we would go out for funds. And then once we have a good solid construction figure, then we would bond for that. So it would be, it wouldn't happen all at once. It would happen in a couple stages.
So I guess to answer the question, next year would be probably the earliest that the real estate acquisition bonding would, would show up, which would then be on the subsequent tax year's bill. And then depending on how fast things move, you may or may not be able to still do the second part of that bonding that year, but it might be actually the following year because it will probably take a long time to develop the site fully to make sure that we've maximized efficiency. So my guess is you'd be, you know, 20% of it would be next year and 80% of it would be the following year. It would be just a rough estimate as far as cost.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair? So that would eliminate the Morgan Avenue site?
Potentially with the amount of acreage that is proposed here, it's near, I believe, 20 acres. So that, the storage items that are out there, yes.
That would be the goal.
Pretty confident that we can store the yard waste, the brush, those type of materials here on this.
And then dependent on that, we can, you know, soil and whatnot, we could potentially sell it to have on the tax base. With selling that property, doing this, what does that impact then to the taxpayers? If we were to put that back on, does that help to lower anything? Does it?
Depending on the payoff for the bonding, I don't know how it would impact the actual bond, but whatever money would come in would be able to supplement other expenses, I'm sure. It's always go to general fund, I'm assuming on the sale of real estate like that. So it would be able to be used for other expenses, lowering the costs, at least at that point in time, or allowing other, you know, projects to move forward that have been delayed for a long time. So the way I'd say this, for those 20 years of bonding, that, that amount would likely be on the tax, or it would be attributed to this, this project. But that sale would be a one-time infusion of cash for the taxpayers that would help. And it could be used in a number of different ways.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. On the favor?
I am.
Hold, period.